So we, we return now back out of recess again to continue with our special meeting for the City of Paris Board of Commissioners and this portion of our agenda is for a review of the utility rate study and recommendations that New Gen Strategies and Solutions has, was engaged to do on our behalf. And join us today is Representative Brown. And so Brown, welcome.
Hello.
And you might have to pull that mic just a little bit closer. I don't know how quickly, or how good it picks up there a little bit, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I first of all apologize for running late. I, for some reason, thought it was later this afternoon, so.
We know that you had some flooding issues there in Nashville, too.
You know, we were, we were lucky, but yeah, a lot of folks weren't so lucky. They never had water in places that didn't even get there in 2010 when they had the big flood in Nashville. It would have been seven inches in less than 12 hours in a few places. So, yeah, it was.
Mike, you want to see if your mic and Brown's are, because it's still a little
Just one, two.
Yeah, a little bit changed them out. Switch there, that might be.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's better.
That's better.
Yes. I'm used, I'm used to speaking through a mask, so that's helpful. So let's, what we, what we did, we did a review of your financials for the electric, water, and wastewater. And then we did a detailed analysis of your rates, what they need to be to achieve your goals. And we'll get into what those goals are. Keep going. Okay. This is just a task list of kind of what we did for each of the utilities. Looking at the financial planning model, multi-year, what your, what your finances look like today versus your costs, and what your projected revenues and projected costs were going forward, trying to arrive at a mixture that quite frankly, let each utility function stand on its own. And you will see in a few minutes where to today, you don't have that equation working out, so to speak, but going forward, you'll get there. This, this is good illustration of my, my, one of my key points here. Looking at your water, wastewater, and electric utility functions, the column there says total revenues. That's what you currently pull in for, you know, from rates and revenues. And then the column from total expenses are from your financial reporting. And notice that your, for your water, wastewater, your expenses exceed your revenues. But I guess the only good part here is your electric system makes up for it. There was quite a bit of margin generated on the electric side that not only covers the losses, so to speak, in water and wastewater, but that $600,000 margin, and don't, don't be confused, that's not profit. That's $600,000 that you guys use and reinvest in your system, cap, fund capital expenditures and other items like that. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at coming out of the gate. That's from your last financial audit from 2020. So any, any questions on, on, I guess, the starting place we had? Okay. What, and before we move on, what we are trying to achieve here is maintaining that margin, if you will, or $600,000 a year to fund your capital project needs as well as get each utility to kind of stand on its own. At least, you'll see in a few moments, what we're able to achieve in a three-year plan is to take the margins in water and wastewater and slowly move them from the negative territory into at least a breakeven for those two utilities. Okay. This is a combined revenue projection for each of the utilities. I want to go to the bottom line first. Notice that while not exactly maintained year to year, we maintain approximately that $600,000 margin year to year. Rationale for doing it that way was basically we're having to balance some rate restructuring, if you will, and we'll get to that in a moment, along with trying to not causing a rate shock for any particular class or customer within a class. Excuse me. But in this, in this scenario here, we've got year one, two, and three laid out for you. On the water side, we're going basically from 1.5, eight million to roughly 2 million over three years. And then for wastewater, it's around 1.7 million to 1.9 million revenues over the same three years. And electric, because you're, at least technically, you're over recovering with margin there. Over time, we're reducing the revenue requirements there. Again, okay, look at the total margin at the bottom. You're maintaining approximately $600,000 a year. So as the water, wastewater rates are increased to help cover their associated costs, the electric side is being decreased accordingly. Any questions or discussions there? Okay. And this one, we're showing you what happens to the actual rates. And I'm not going to get too much in the weeds here, but if it, the column that says current rates, your current rates for water have a customer charge of 834. And then notice that the rates, the first one is zero. That's because the first 2,000 gallons is included in the 834. Now, that's a very, very old rate structure. We don't see a lot of those anymore. And what we're proposing to do over time, again, is make, make that particular rate structure more uniform and consistent with other utilities and current practices. But on the, on the current rate there, 834 for a customer charge, again, including the first 2,000 gallons. And then from there, you see that, we call those a declining block rate. The more you use, the less it becomes on a volumetric basis. Again, that's an older rate design. And the other issue, as you'll see after a while, is that very last tier is actually below your average cost of production. Okay? So that's, you don't, you don't want to see that. And you'll, you'll, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. We talked about the sale for resale or the wholesale rate. But you know, that's just your current year. And then in year one, what we're doing is we're increasing the revenue requirements, but we're also noticed that we flattened the rate charge. So no matter what you use, it's always the same rate per 1,000 gallons. So go from a declining block, starting at 285, to a flat rate at 304. Same thing with year two. After we get through year one transition, kind of restructure the rates and generate a little bit more revenue. In year two, you're in a situation where we're really just generating a little bit extra revenue in preparation for what we would suggest doing in year three. And that is do away with the first block quote that's included in the, the customer charge. And notice we, coming out of the gate, we started with a $3, down from 910. You have a $3 customer charge followed by 340 for all gallons used. Any discussion or thoughts?
Brown, the only thing I thought about, and I'd direct this to Darren and, and to Mike, when was the last, for the record, when was the last rate increase on water?
The in-city rate increase in water was 99?
I believe so. And that was because of a project we were doing, and, and we had to adjust the rates on a KIA infrastructure loan, I believe.
For debt service.
It was a wastewater rating.
No, it was, well, it was a water rate increase that also impacts wastewater because it is, it is tied.
The amount of water.
Right. Now, waste, out of city, there was a project done in 2013? Is that right?
I believe so. A county water extension that, that actually put a surcharge on, on those customers until the, the bond issue is paid off.
So, so Commissioner, to your, to your question, there has not been a study in a rate increase looked at to, to this depth for almost a decade.
To this level, even longer than that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brown.
Yeah. And. I'm sorry, Brown. So when you were talking about, you know, current, and we, we talked about a declining base on, so would it be fair to say that, you know, the old rate structures that a lot of, lot of utilities did and looked at that, that the gallon to produce 1,000 gallons of water doesn't go down even if, you know, if somebody's using 10,000 gallons versus somebody using 1,000 gallons, the cost to produce that is still the same? And that's why looking at the change in the model through, is that?
That's, that is a good, a good rationale. The other thing is, where you did see declining block rates in the past was when the, the customer charge didn't cover enough. And they were trying to get that in the first blocks. Not necessarily the case here. But I will say that going forward, say after year three, we, we would suggest any future revenue needs be taken care of with an increase in the customer charge alone. The, the volumetric rates are about where they need to be. You could, you could have an argument for going forward after year three to do more in the customer charge and less, if you will, in the volumetric over time. But what, what we're accomplishing here over the, the three years is again, having that balancing act between trying to increase revenues but, and restructure the rates without significantly impacting, you know, small customers, large customers, et cetera.
I interject something else.
Certainly.
But one of the other things I was going to point out, too, also, is that within the Bluegrass Area Development District, there are, I've seen this, the 2019, I've seen the 2020, that the City of Paris ranks number one out of cities greater than 2,500 in population and things of that nature with our, with our current rate of $8.34. And that compares to the highest in this area, of course, is Kentucky American Water in Lexington. And their rate is somewhere around, right around the $25, where we're paying 834 for the first 2,000 gallons. In Lexington, you pay 20. In round numbers, you pay $25 for the first 2,000. So I just.
That's significant.
Yeah. That's closest to $10 to us, right?
Yes. And, but there is a, a report that would, that's, I've seen it, and what have you, but we are, I think there's, well, anyway, I know there's 17 counties, but there's all kinds of different.
Right.
Water districts in that, but.
Right. That's the Bluegrass.
In the 20, yeah, in the Bluegrass Area Development District, in towns 25, with populations of 2,500 or more, we're, we're rated number one with the lowest rate.
Yes.
And then when we get to the wastewater side, we're, we're right there, too. So anyway, that's, we'll cover that in a minute, but anyway.
Well, even if, even if in year three, after we've completely restructured and completed that process of flattening actual rates, your, your 2,000 gallon is still number one. The most economical. Let's look at an example bill for residential customer. The average, the average residential customer in your system is about 2,500 gallons a, a month. But we're showing what happens here for a lower user and, and then someone that uses twice as much. So go from 35 to 7,000. But in, in this case, I guess the, one of the points is, yes, while we are making an increase, it's pretty modest. One, because the basis is pretty low to begin with. For 3,500 gallons, which is your average user, you go from 1262 to 1325. It's a 63 cent increase per month. So again, fairly modest. I think you can buy a cup of coffee for that anymore. Can't even buy a bottle of water for that anymore. But, so it's 63 cents a month increase for the average user. And then we show you there for the, again, larger and smaller customers. Even in the largest customer, they're showing is 7,000 gallons. It's about a $1.29 increase.
Yep.
Around 5 percent, okay, on a percentage basis. Okay, just, here is a commercial water customer, for your commercial water customer rates, the, the rate structure. Again, the declining block you see, 285 down to 205. And even here, even though the rate per gallon, per thousand gallon is higher, that 205 is still below your average cost, which we'll get to next, I think. But in this case, we're coming out of the gate in year one, flattening the, the charge and increasing the customer charge just, just slightly. So that, that takes, in year two and three similarly, we've got some rates that, that kind of mirror what you saw with residential. Year three being the removal of that tier one charge and all gallons at, at the same rate. The next slide shows the, the actual bill for that customer. For your commercial class, they have, they, they use a little bit more per, on average, per month, 3,900 shown there the, the next to last line. So then for an average commercial customer, goes from 1376 to 1442.
I don't have that slide.
What's that?
I don't have that slide. I don't.
Yeah, that's, yeah, 3,900. You're right. Next to last line. You've got 1442. That's a 66 cent increase. Again, fairly modest, around five, almost 5 percent, just like the, the other one. That's, that's the first year change. Now, wholesale rate, this is your sales for resale to Kentucky American. And looking at your cost of service analysis, you were showing that the average, your average cost for production, and that's not including distribution, that's just your production cost, and then say to the interconnection point with Kentucky American, which you like large pipes. So you wouldn't include all your smaller laterals, all your, you know, distribution in town, things of that nature. Those are excluded from this calculation. And we're showing that, that your average cost is 254. So if you recall from those other slides, it goes, your current declining blocks, some of them are below that 254. That's, that's another thing we're trying to correct again over the, over the three-year period. So that, for Kentucky American, we don't propose to, to do any phase-in. Just go ahead and change that from 2 and 1/4 to 254. It's, you know, just incidentally, that's, that's around 9 percent of your total revenue for, for year one.
So on, on the wholesale rate, for the Commission's understanding, previously, we had a couple of wholesale customers that we sold to. Currently, we only have the Kentucky American that we do. And Todd, you can, from your experience, you can interject, because I know we've had conversations about that, is that to make that change, it's a little bit different than, than just making a residential change. There's some, some work that you would have to do with the PSC, Public Service Commission, even though we're not regulated by them because you do sell wholesale to another regulator, that you would have to show the work that, that Brown and his team has done, where those numbers come from.
Yeah, that's right. And it's the historical perspective with the PSC here, it's generally been that if the city that provides wholesale service, that wholesale purchaser like Kentucky American in this case, if they don't object, then the PSC will allow that to go into effect without much work. If they were to object, then that's when the PSC will set up a, a case to investigate it. It could last up to 10 months long, where we basically have to go and prove why we're charging the increase up to 254. And, and so on the front end, there's been a number of cases where C's have said, oh yeah, we're going to increase the rate. They do it, and they don't have the cost justification that Brown is dealing. So we're ahead of the game there, and that's going to help us out. Kentucky American is also sophisticated enough to realize when they see that kind of work, that they're, they're going to have expense if they want to challenge us. So maybe they'll forego that. The one caveat that I will say on all that is that last year, we saw about three or four cities, Harrisburg, Augusta, Butler, up in Pendleton County, where the PSC started to get a little curious about what was going on, on the rates that were being proposed. Even though the other side, the purchaser, agreed to that wholesale rate, the PSC stepped back and said, no, 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 we want more information. So as much as I would like to tell you, let's get this information, once, if you want to go that route, get the information to Kentucky American, make sure they don't object, we go forward. Even if they don't object, the PSC may or may not. And they do have the authority to investigate if they so choose.
And right now, on that interconnect, I think Kentucky American, Mike, they're selling it for 4?
445.
445.
Would you, would you, for the, for the public and for our newest Commissioners, would you give us a, a background kind of about Millersburg and Kentucky American Water and a little bit of history on that, please?
Sure. Actually, Mike and Chad can.
Chad, everybody.
Better, better enunciate and, and give the history of that, because that was, but we do have that interconnect right now that allows them to purchase from us a certain, Chad, what's the number of gallons?
We average about 150,000 a day. And that runs into about 5 billion a month, give or take. And I think the max on that's 200,000 a day.
They, that they purchase from us to, we, so we produce the water, treat the water, distribute it down to that point. Then at that point there, of the main switch over is where they start pulling and the, the numbers that Chad was just talking about. That's what they actually purchase from us for their use to serve those customers.
Years ago, Millersburg ran into a difficult situation. The mining company that was there left, pulled out. That was their sole source of revenue. They reached out to us to want them to, to look at some options they could do to continue to provide water for their customers. We told them we, we would help them out any way we could. They went into negotiations with Kentucky American and, and sold their system to Kentucky American. Kentucky American had a little glitch in that they, they didn't buy their water plant for whatever reason. So they needed to, to, to get water from somewhere. So they had an agreement drawn up with us for a temporary connection to provide water from the City of Paris, so the people in Millersburg had water. We, we signed that temporary agreement, which is now, refresh my memory, it's six years old now. In, in the first line of the agreement, it says this is for at least 18 months. And at that rate, just to try to help them out. Since then, Kentucky American is pushing for an interconnection between Lexington, a pipe that runs along Lexington Road and tied into the City of Paris. And they basically want to wheel whatever they put into the system, they take out on the other end. But they want us to bear the expense of doing that interconnection. And we don't feel like that should be our expenses, what has been in the past. So is that your, how you remember it stand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I didn't want to, I figured it would better, better come from you or Darren or somebody, Mike and Chad, thanks, to talk about that versus myself.
Right now, there's, there's an eight-inch water line that runs out Millersburg Road all the way to Redmond Road. And Redmond Road, it changes to six inch. And from, from there, goes into the city of Millersburg. And, and they have a, a station there where they receive the water and, and the meter, they meter the water they use.
So to, to your point in, in looking at these numbers, Commissioner, again, even, even the increase, that increase, you know, we are not, the increase are being proposed or even the current rate does, is not what they are charging their customers on. Yeah. And so, I mean, that's, I think that's a, there's a, I know that I've had conversations with, with folks. There's a misunderstanding on that. They think that the City of Paris is setting that $4 and something to Millersburg, but we're not. Actually, Kentucky American is building in their cost of operations on top of, and then plus making their, their revenue enhancement on top of what we're actually charging.
The only other thing I was going to mention, and again, I, I, I can't get down into weeds on this, but Chad's here, but it has to do with the treatment of the water. Kentucky American Water treats the water that comes through, that flows through their pipe and into their customers and their systems different than we, than we treat our water for our customers. And that, that hence is another issue that has to be faced if you're trying to wheel water through a system.
That's correct.
That would be correct.
Yes, on that, we're.
No, I'm sorry.
Again, no, we, no, we just suggested.
This was, this was a good time to.
Yeah.
I've been thinking about that. But the one thing, Chad, that I noticed on here that I didn't realize that, personally, I didn't realize that it's 9 percent of our revenue on the water system is sold to Millersburg. I mean, 9 percent.
I wouldn't wear that till I saw them.
Yeah. I, I mean, that, we talked about those numbers, you know, we have for, for months and months and months about, you know, the processing and things like that. But when you look at it to say, out of the total revenue on a monthly, or on an annual basis, it's 9 percent. That's.
That's significant.
Tugily, that's, that's a lot.
The thing that didn't get to remember there is we're suggesting you, you do that pretty much immediately.
Yeah.
Without a phase-in.
Yeah.
And as far as discussions with Kentucky American, are you, are you thinking about some preliminary discussions where you can do share, maybe a summary of the cost, cost?
In all likelihood, yes.
Yeah. I think that would be a wise thing to do.
I, I have a pretty good relationship with an attorney there in Lexington. And it would probably just smooth things over.
Sure.
In a long run, if we can say, here it is, we plan on doing this. If you see any flaws, let us know now before we get several thousand dollars in the legal fees and trying to buy it. But that would be my recommendation, Commissioner.
Thank you, Brown.
All right. Let's go to wastewater for a moment. For wastewater, your current rate structure does not have that declining block. It's, it's the flat charge. It is, again, affected by the water rates. And we maintain the relationship. You're, again, looking at moving forward with your revenues. We're increasing revenues in year one, two, and three. Now aesthetic, you, you might, you might say, well, the, the aesthetics didn't look like that's what you're doing in year three. Looks like you're going down. Well, the volumetric rate goes down, but that first 2,000 that is included is now absorbed, if you will. We, we could play around with that a little bit as far as increasing that back to 582. And then, but you have to decrease that customer charge significantly to do that. So that, that again, was kind of a, trying to look at a, a balance between rate impact and, and total revenue. But, but again, you, you do achieve your revenue goals in year one, two, and three, using that rate structure. Three-year phase-in, just like the others. For the, for the average wastewater customer here, usually theirs, again, the same as 3, 3,500. In year one, the average customer at 3,500, yours from 1866 to $20.15. That's a 49 cent increase. Again, fairly modest. Any questions there?
So if my math's correct, and Commissioner Galbraith's over there getting his calculator out. So it's, it's roughly between the water and the wastewater, right around a dollar in year one combined, on, on average, or just under a dollar?
Yeah. I did add a slide, and maybe, I think it was in your slide deck, and we'll see in a moment. I, I looked at what happened to each year for a customer that, that receives electric water and wastewater. So you'll see the total impact in just a minute.
And I mentioned, I missed, we're still looking at, at the average, let's say, the average billing. I know, Paul, ago you said that on one of the other numbers, it's, it's like 3,000, I think it was the gallons.
Yeah.
And the same thing, and I guess.
3,500. Both of your wastewater and water average is about 3,500.
If we're billed for 3,000, they get billed on wastewater for 3,000.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other thoughts or comments there? Okay. Still electric right quick. Electric is easy. It's always easy to decrease rates. It makes it a little scary. It's a little scary, though. You, you don't increase, you don't decrease rates partly ever. A lot of times, just because the, the revenues are uncertain, et cetera. In, in your case, you've got a couple of three things that are at play here. One is, your rates are, have been fairly much kept constant after transition from KU to KYVA. The cost, the cost structure is different, and the cost level is different. I'll give you an example. Under KU, your fixed charges for demand, okay, were something less than, say, 40 percent, and your energy charges were made up about 50 or 60 percent. Now, under KU, under KYVA, it's more. Now, under K, under KYMEA, it's more, almost, it's almost fifty-fifty, so your, your, your energy costs are lower and your fixed costs are higher, under KYMEA. So that, that makes an impact when you start saying, well, let's do a cost analysis and see which revenue classes, which would be residential, commercial, or industrial, et cetera, which ones are carrying their own cost. Well, when you change the structure like that, that makes a huge difference, so we, we tried to address that as well. Now, the overall, your overall cost under KYMEA is also less than if it was under KU. In addition to that, you've got, under KU, you had annual rate adjustments. Of course, most of the time it was up, but because it was done annually, and sometimes they weren't insignificant, we, some years ago, we instituted that power cost adjustment, PCA. Under KYMEA, you don't, you don't have that annual adjustment. When there are adjustments, you've got a long lead time as far as, you know, planning for it. I mean, you're on the board, and you see long in advance what your underlying cost structure is. And we, there's not hardly anything going on right now with your cost structure, I think there's some transmission cost increases, and then next year, one of the power supply deals comes off the table, another one comes in. But the overall requirements for your revenues aren't significantly different, but again, you, you've got some time to plan for that going forward. So one of the things we recommend doing, doing well with PCA, because, and that, that was to take care of those annual frequent changes that you, that you got from KU, so you don't have to deal with that going forward, about, about more stability.
True up.
Oh, yeah, the true up was also part of that. It, and it was, it was generally a catch-up, it was a charge of a credit. We're a little bit fortunate in the last couple of years, so it was KU, especially last year, but, well, you didn't, you didn't get.
We didn't get the last one, we.
You, you missed that one.
We left early.
You left early.
That's right.
You left on time. But on, on electric there, you'll see that the, you had, you had a similar rate, declining block rate. I will add that when I, when I, I've been doing rates for a while, and when I looked at your tiered rates, for example, that first tier, I think, was like fifty KW, okay? That's like running a hairdryer for ten, twenty minutes. A hairdryer, I don't use one anymore, but, but I hear, I hear they, they pull like a thousand watts, that's one KW. You know, so you use one of those for, you know, a few minutes a day, and you use fifty KW. When you see those rates, that those first few blocks are that, that small, that tells me that they're really, really, really old, okay? They did it back, back when they were electrifying the communities, because what they, what they would do is they say, well, if you just got lighting, we'll break that at fifty. But if you've got a washing machine and dryer, well, we're going to break that maybe at a hundred, and that's what your rates look like, okay? So it's just something to consider when you, when you look at these really, really old rates, and your, your, your blocks went like from fifty, next hundred, next hundred, and next two hundred. But they, and once you add those up, that's what, four hundred KW, well, your average customer was a thousand, so they're already blasting through all of the, all of the different teeters. So what we're suggesting to do, like the other ones, is flatten those rate charges, and we did, we did that the first year, went to a little over, a little over nine cents. So, again, we had to do a little balancing here, because you've got, you've got that, that first tier, once, well, a dollar seventy-seven fixed today, and that was for the first fifty. And then you've got that service charge, or a customer charge, or a meter charge for ten seventy-five, we just increased that a nickel, and then kept it the same, at least for this, for this plan here. Or you could elect to do something different implemented. For year one, we would suggest you flatten it out, a little over nine cents, and they've got ten eighty there for the customer charge, and just keep that going forward. Your average customer, next slide there, again, the average customer is at the thousand on this one, that's the first line. So current rates, about a hundred and eleven dollars for average bill, and then you're going forward, he's going to get a decrease of, of more than a dollar, okay? Notice that the two thousand, we got just a slight increase as it did the three thousand, and that's because we flattened, if you go back one. Notice that, no, that, yeah.
You had it right, previous.
Uh, there you go. On, on that one, your, your charge of nine ninety, point zero nine nine five two in year one. That last block, which is again over four hundred, it was a little bit cheaper than that, so that's why you have that very, very slight increase for the larger customers. But again, it's, it's a, it's a dollar and thirty cents for two thousand kilowatt hour customer. You don't, you don't have that issue going forward because it's already flat.
Yeah, go ahead. No, what I was going to say though is, when you look at, when you, and I, I was shocked when I found out that, let's say, the average billable for, for electric is a thousand, because I, I was shocked at that. But when you look at the thousand, like, if you could go back to that other, there you go, if it's, works out to be point one one seven on, on the, on the first thousand, but when you get down to the three thousand, it actually, per kilowatt hour falls, the rate falls because it then becomes ti, I call it ten cents.
Right.
Per kilowatt. So on, at a thousand, it's eleven cents, but if you use three thousand, it's ten cents, but you got three times your bill, and, and that's what I guess, I was shocked that it was a thousand, because I volunteered for an organization on Thursday, and I don't know that hardly anybody that comes in has a thousand on their, needing help with their utility bills and things, and they're usually in the two to three thousand range. But then, those, those are sometimes typically past due, they're past due for, to ask a reason that if they're used to.
The other thing.
Two, three thousand KW is a month.
The other thing you bring out there is a, the assumption that your economically disadvantaged customers use less, well, that's not true.
Not true.
Um, unfortunately, they also live in substandard housing, as far as insulation goes, and, and are not very efficient, so sad, sadly true, a lot of your customers on the lower income levels actually have a higher average use.
Right.
So that's one thing to kind of keep in mind when people say, well, what are you doing to the little customers, you know? Well, little customers on fixed income, not necessarily your lower users. And also, also some kind of smart aleck say, well, fixed income's not bad, it's low, fixed income is bad. Next slide here is the commercial. Likewise, you've got the declining block, it'll be flattened out going forward, have the customer charge the same, but in each year, there was a reduction. And on the commercial, note, I think the average on that one was, was actually the twenty-four hundred, the bottom line there. And on the commercial, then they, they typically are going to use more power, but e- even, even though they're using more, the average rate ended up, not impacting them like it did on the residential side. The average rate for year one is actually above that last year, so they, they all get a little bit of increase, but, and, and, or decrease, but in no case do you have a lot of an impact in, in customer. And one of my favorite slides is the, I guess, last one here, this is showing your average customer for, it takes water, wastewater, and electric. Their current bill for all three services is a hundred forty-two ninety-seven. In year one, they have a seventy-five cent increase, again, that's for all three together. And then in year two, to decrease, it's mostly driven, of course, by the electric coming down, and your water, wastewater coming up, but not enough to offset that average, electric coming down. And the, the last year, there's an increase of one twenty-eight. So the average customer is not going to really see an impact if they, if they get all three services from them. So I hope that's, I hope that helped, while I, I like that slide, it's, it communicates that, you know, yes, you're, you're trying to realign your, your revenues to meet your costs in water and wastewater, at the same time, maintain your margin overall by decreasing your, your electric. The, the other thing, I guess, I meant to say this earlier, you talk about, I mean, in the future, dealing with some, financing some of your larger capital projects, the, the financial institutions will really appreciate each utility kind of holding its own. Sometimes they actually make you do that, and you don't want to be in that position, you're kind of, you're, you're kind of getting out ahead of it here. I know that we worked with a, who was it? It was close, Winchester, one year, and they were faced with a hundred percent increase. And we did that over three years, but it was painful, I mean, you can't, you can't make that kind of pain go away. Because that was driven by a large project, the debt service costs, and then the financial, I forgot if it was KIA or otherwise, but they said, you need, you need to recover the debt service from those customers, not delay. So, you know, in this case, I, I think you're, you're wise in, in addressing this now rather than later. It's always better to do something now, it's kind of, it's kind of fish, it doesn't get better with age. That's really all I had for today. Would you like to entertain any other questions or comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Brown? So when we started into this process, and again, aligning with, looking at assets and the management, looking at our water and our wastewater systems, of doing our unit's asset management, that's when, when we started to realize, it's all, our, our piece in part will go together to, to look at that. But I, I know that one of the first budgets that, that I was involved with, we looked at the utility side, and noticed that disparate, there, that they weren't standing alone. And as well as we were, the, the, the vision that previous boards of commission took in separating out from KU and forming a long Kentucky, going into KYMEA with originally eight other communities, I believe, there was nine total, I think that's expanded, maybe one or two cents there. And the cost savings that that had to our customer, continuing to pass that cost savings on, and you still were underwriting the cost of your water and sewer operations, so. Now, this, this proposal here does allow us to, again, let each of those get to a point where they each stand on their own, which that, that is just, I, from my personal opinion, and Brown and I have talked about this, is, you know, that's where you want to be. Again, as you go forward and looking at those projects, as Brown mentioned, that may be coming up for our water and wastewater, that's what the, whether we, grants, loans, combinations, you know, bonds, that's what they're going to be looking at, that, that, that is. And so that's why we felt it was important to do this, this process, and go through this procedure, is at the same time as we were doing those asset managements.
Not the, not the other comment, I was wanting to ask you, Brown, in the past, when we had talked about, let's say, some of the stale rates that we had in some of our, let's say, our utilities and things like that, and we'd talked about, was there a way that you could look at maybe a consumer price index and just have built into the, into your structure? You would have, and I'll just say the consumer price index, or you could use whatever index you want to use out there, and have that just automatically trigger me in at the end of the year to, Brad, shut up. I see you're back there talking. But a, at least you would build, you could have that built in, built into the system so that we're not faced, as we talked about, we haven't maybe had a water increase since nineteen ninety-nine.
Right.
And there's nothing we can buy today that we could buy for, for nineteen ninety-nine prices.
I, I do see some of that put in play, the, and we, we need to tie it to a, you know, well-accepted index, if you will. The other thing that we heavily suggest when going down that, that route is, is to do it at the same time, you know, so if we've got a, an automatic cost of living increase that we're going to factor in here, I would say subject to our cost increases needing it, okay?
Yeah, yes, okay, I, I, that's, that was.
That way, that way, you've got like, you know, automatic increases that customers actually come to expect, and they, they understand that. But then, if you, if you're able to hold your cost at bay and don't need it, you can always elect not to do it, which is always a positive, you know, reflection on, on what you're trying to do financially.
Right, okay, all right. So there's some other, there's some other languages, and there's different approach?
That, that's, that's, that's our recommendation.
Okay, okay.
I've seen some that don't have it, but, you know, if you have an automatic increase, and you don't have associated automatic cost increases to, to offset that, like, you're, you're really just increasing rates and increasing your margin for, for no apparent reason. Right, there could be apparent reasons, you might say, well, we're going to use a cost of living increase to try to get our rates up, and generate more margin to cover debt service for future projects. And again, you don't always have to have that language in place.
Okay, all right.
I would, I would say also, if you go back to that slide, it shows the, uh, three, all three years for one, I don't know, for, there it is, for, for any of them, we're, we're looking at electric here. But when, when you get to, you know, year one, you know, implement that, you've got a good basis for that, but for year two and year three, I would suggest that you always, you know, like any plan, you, you plan, you do it, check it. You get to do it at, at the end of the year, first year before you implement year two, check to make sure that those, those rates generate about what you thought they would, and that your needs are, are consistent with what was in the plan or ratio. So while that is a plan, but it's based on what we know today, things change, so just a, a review would be in order before you go to year two, and the same thing with year three.
So Todd, if this was accepted, you would, you would need to set the rates each year, still?
Well, it, it depends on what you want to do. We, we could, well, after this, we'll have to do more of that second to rates that you have within other organs. But you could do it one of two ways, you could put all three tiers, years in the phase and approach into your organs, but as with any other legislative decision, this legislative body cannot bind a future legislative decision. So within two years, even though you've got this in place, in two, you say, oh my gosh, our costs went up for chemicals at the water treatment plant, or something happened with KYMEA and costs went up, you can always make that change going forward. Not, you couldn't do any retroactive, but you could still change that phase and approach, even if you have, the other option is, you implement the rates right now for, for year one, and then next year, you tell your staff, hey, staff, make sure it's on the agenda for next year, so we can do it phase two. And I work with at least one city, they look at their utility expenses and revenues when budget comes around, and so every year, they're putting in a rate increase. So it's really whatever you all prefer, with, with putting all three years in it, I guess, folks coming into the communities to say, hey, this is what we planned for. The downside to that is if in two years, you do have to change something, like, wait a minute, we thought it was this, but, I mean, you, you can do either one.
I, I would also say, into that point, having something for consideration for the board, looking at it, is that there's also an economic development aspect to that. Companies looking at coming in and looking what their costs may be after they get up and going, if they see something already planned out, that they, that is good data for them not to be, and makes a, makes a part of their decision a little bit by seeing that already out there. That they, they know what they're, they're talking about, and, well, again, you're not binding somebody, a, a future board of commission that does have an economic development benefit by doing multiple years.
If you do all three of, it might be beneficial to call the future one projected.
Right.
That way, if you were in need to do something different, it's, it communicates that sort of, on the front end, if that makes sense.
That's not a hard fast number, yeah.
All right, all right.
Okay.
You know, you, you just don't, you just never, you never know.
And certainly with the, with the whole, sorry, to Kentucky American, I fully agree that it should be all one. If the costs say that we can charge two fifty-four, let's do it right away, if we're ready, we don't want to be trying to base that in, we might have three potential battles with the PSC, which we don't want. Now, maybe Kentucky American doesn't want that either, but they would also have the opportunity to increase their rates based on our increase, and so that would put them in a, a position they wouldn't like it. So just to appease everyone, and for girls, it would be better to put that all in, immediately.
So, that slide that you just had up there, Mike, that lives in there, so if I'm reading that. So, Brown, oh, that slide that you just had up there, Mike, that lives in there, so if I'm reading that correctly, um, year three, on the average. If, uh, a customer that has all, all three of our services, water, wastewater, and electric, uh, average residential customer, that at year three, um, you know, a little less than thirteen dollars increase a year. Between now and then, is that right? Dollar twenty-eight.
Dollar twenty-eight.
Uh, twenty-eight a month, sometimes twelve months.
Actually, I think those, yeah, if you, you know, you take the difference between the current rate, the current cost, if you will, of a hundred and forty-two ninety-seven. And then at year three, for the same services, it's, uh, one forty-four oh nine. That's, that's the, uh.
Something roughly, over a course of a, a year, about fifteen dollar, so a dollar and fifty cents, something like, is that right?
It's a dollar twenty.
No, you said a dollar twenty-eight.
Per month, yeah, yeah, I was just talking about per month, I was talking about for the year.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, for the whole, in a year, in a year's time, the bill is, on the average customer is gonna go less than a cent, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're talking about increases, but, you know, I think that that goes back to, and, and kudos to, to Sparky and Pat and Chad and, and their departments. For our ability to keep, you know, rates the way we've been doing it and providing, uh, you know, a, a good product at a, a very reasonable rate. And even the increase, uh, because of their work and their team's work in their department, is, is keeping that fifteen dollars a year at, by year three.
Brown, on the early slides, that you had the margin there.
Uh-huh.
Does that incorporate forecasted, anticipated expenses and revenues, or is that just based on a fixed?
No, we actually, in, uh, the commensurate study we did, the, uh, the underlying cost to serve was increased at the, uh, inflation level. Projecting was like two, two point something percent. So we did, we did assume that your underlying cost would increase. So that, that's taken care of at the same time. Your margins are maintained while your overall underlying costs are increasing.
Any other questions, comments?
It figures, it figures out then, if you take the one forty-two ninety-seven and the total utilities and then after year three, one forty-four oh nine. The buck twenty-eight over top of the, they divided about the one forty-two, it's only, it's about eight tenths of one percent. Really, I mean, it's less than one percent over a three, you know, in a three-year period, if you use the average. Using all three of those numbers, that, that's the.
Yep. And again, the, the goal here overall was, was not necessarily to generate a lot more revenue overall. It was to realign and have each utility cover itself. Cause it, it, it never looks good if you're, if you're, for example, if you have a large, uh, water or wastewater project, if you need to finance. And look at your financials, they go, well, that, your wastewater and water utilities are actually losing money. So that, that's, that's not where you wanna be.
And this also allows us to move, especially on the electric side, or keep our ability of electric side. Right now, we're running, now Brad and I looked, or talked about this, we were what, twenty-six or twenty-seven days, uh, of reserve, uh, when we looked at our capital and for the electric department.
Yeah.
And I think, Brown, you said that the industry is about, what, forty-two or forty-five days?
You, you see a lot of the, uh, an eighth of a year of forty-five days. You see, you see, you say it's kind of, it's not really real fun per se, but you see, that's a, a very common term.
So it still allows us to, to have, you know, ability to, to cover that, especially when our days to collect are forty-plus days, you know?
Forty-plus days.
But again, since in COVID and all that, we, I mean, we made huge, I mean, we made huge strides in the last ninety days. It's back in November and December, it was like, OMG, I thought, Lord have mercy. But anyway, it's, it's really, you know, the sixty to ninety and to ninety plus, those numbers have fallen way down.
The other thing you've got, well, electric especially, is that your wholesale costs for electricity, um, are enormous compared to water, wastewater. So, uh, you're, you're shaking, you can't use it a lot, build up a little bit for, you know, as bill is, your people pay their bills. And then all of a sudden, the balance goes bam, you pay the power bill.
Oh, yeah.
You've got that sawtooth. And you, you don't, I, I worked, I worked for a utility one time, that they're, that they were having trouble because when they wrote the check for the power bill, it went negative. And they were, they were trying to get back positive, you know, but it kept stretching out, the bank didn't like that.
Of course, but, um.
Yeah, you, you need, you need some working capital for electric especially.
Additional questions for Brown? Brown?
It's out, I'm really idiot, I mean.
Well, I, I, again, I go, I go back to, to the work that our departments and, and kudos to them, to be very good stewards of the resources, uh, that we've been entrusted in. And it, it allows us to, to make those adjustments, but not have to be, you talked about Winchester, I mean, communities. I mean, Lexington was under decree order and their rates were forty percent or something, you know, increased, you know?
For, for a recent traveler through your city, what is your construction cost?
So the state of Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet is doing an eight-plus million dollar, uh, reworking of the roadway coming into town. Uh, but it also, uh, realigns the, uh, the stormwater sewer, or, or stormwater runoff, uh, to take it off the road. And it is actually a sidewalk-to-sidewalk, uh, project that they're doing on that. And then they will also, High Street, as you go out, you'll start seeing that. And then, and, and in alignment with that, Columbia Gas, which all gas companies are doing across the nation, are redoing their, their major lines and stuff. So, and we've got.
They're very busy tearing up the road.
Yes. Uh, we, we're, we are very looking forward to twenty-twenty-two for that project to be completed. Well, Brown, we appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, without any other business come from the body, is there a motion for adjournment? We have a motion for adjournment, is there a second, a second? Roll call, please.
Mayor Plummer?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Galbraith?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gibson, motion carries.
Thank you.